The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of July 10th, 2024. It's good to see all of you here. And now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total, for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call on you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received seven speaker cards for items not listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Michael Gridley, followed by Walter Keenan, followed by Anchee Lauer.
Come on up here, Mr. Gridley. And just a reminder to all of you, raise and lower the mic, just to make sure we can hear you. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Michael Gridley. Really bad public speaking, so I wrote out a little something. Has to do with the code issue, so let me begin. My name is Michael Gridley, and recently I had a neighbor attach a large shelving unit to a cinder block wall we share. When I approached him, the neighbor was less than cordial when I confronted him, and it came down to an insurance issue. He said he would lie to get out of paying the insurance. After the confrontation, I had pictures of him using the shelving units to store items related to his business, including a box with the words "live fish" proudly above the fence top, so that I'm able to see it, which I feel like was a form of harassment. This is in a residential area, too. I called code enforcement, who would not do anything, stating that it was a civil matter, but did take interest in the fact that the neighbor did not have the proper permits to run his koi fishery, and asked for my help. I was in contact with George Noriega and Savannah Alvarez, who, the latter, asked me to peek over the fence and take a couple pictures of the fishery, so that they can investigate him further. I was never updated, so on April 25th, I re- emailed her pictures with the exposed open filter system and asked if that was good enough for a judge to sign off for an investigation. I still was not happy with the response, so I emailed the planning department, stating that the neighbor's being a nuisance, and after disappointing back and forth, I ended up emailing the city manager, which got me a phone call from a manager named Dave, and a visit from George. Again, I'm sorry, I'm a bad public speaker. Despite having several code violations, he was eventually able to obtain the necessary permits to run his koi fish business. So after gaining his permit, the gentleman turned around and had my house violated for a retaining wall in my front yard, which had never bothered him before this. So in order to fix this minor issue, it'll actually run me about several thousand dollars to remove and replace the cinder blocks in my front yard, which the code enforcement requires. Sorry. Also, it would be against every fiber in my core not to remove the palm tree next to the wall, because if I don't do that, it would just crumble the wall again.
Sir, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, and then we can connect you with staff, as needed?
I apologize. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Kleg, is there somebody who could just follow up with?
Yes, Mayor, we're familiar with this case.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Next speaker, please.
Walter Keenan, followed by Anchee Lauer, followed by Eddie Lane.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Walter Keenan. I'm addressing today an issue regarding a home in my neighborhood, which is in Ward Four, that is being run as a full-time Airbnb. This is not a part-time operation, and it's not a part-time operation, only being rented out occasionally, but rather a full-time hotel-type situation. There's no one living at the residence, but rather it's made available for short-term rental, seven days a week, all year long. This has been going on for about nine months. In April, I began querying city departments about whether or not there were any limitations on such use of a property in the residential area. I contacted the planning division, then the code enforcement office, then the city attorney's office, and finally spoke with my council member. All the individuals I communicated with told me and confirmed that the operation of an Airbnb within the city limits is not allowed. Prior to reaching out to my council member, the city attorney with whom I had spoken recently had sent a cease and desist letter and followed that up with a phone call to the owner of the property. I was told that the owner indicated they were unaware that using the property as an Airbnb was not allowed, and they would cease immediately. That property owner completely disregarded the city attorney and has continued, and I would almost say aggressively, actively advertising and renting out this property for Airbnb. It is a nice property, and it's in a nice area, so consequently, it's being rented out on a regular basis. Over the last three months, it's probably been about 30% to 40% rented, which is high for an Airbnb, I think. I think hotels would like that. In my last conversation with my council member, he said that he talked to the city attorney at last meeting, and that another more strongly worded letter would be sent, but beyond that, nothing further would be done. That more strongly worded letter was in fact sent on Tuesday, July 9th. However, given the utter disregard the property owner showed for the first letter, I am not optimistic that any different reaction will occur to the second letter. That is, without some action for backup. Why is this important? Such an operation is not conducive to an establishment of a neighborhood where individuals get to know each other, raise families, and look out for each other.
Mr. Keenan, your time's up. Can you bring your comments to a close? You can just finish a sentence or two?
Well, it's wrong for a lot of reasons, and primarily, it's not allowed. I was told by a city attorney and code enforcement that any further action is up to you, the city council. They need you to do something to enforce the rule.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've looked at this different times I've spoke with Mr. Keenan, and I guess a committee is looking at it, and we could go back to committee and see what we can do on the Airbnb issue.
Correct, Councilmember Smith, mayor and council. This topic has been the pending queue for committee review, but also, we have pursued the same type of action that we do when we're made aware of these types of issues, where we issue the cease and desist letters. And again, this is not getting any less action than any other similar case.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Apparently, if you ignore the letters or ignore the rule, you don't have to abide.
Next speaker, please.
Anchee Lauer, followed by Eddie Lane, followed by Paul Lin Festi.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome. Good afternoon. My name is Anchee Lauer. I'm here representing the Sierra Club. I'm part of the Concavia chapter, and I brought some material to be distributed that supports my statement today. I put it here in the...
That would be fine.
So I want to speak regarding item 7E8, which is being discussed this afternoon at 5:30, about the agreement the city has with General Tree Services, a tree trimming company. So the Sierra Club has written a letter a couple weeks ago about certain aspects that are highlighted in that document that I put here for you to review. It's about general tree, but it's about habitat destruction and the responsibility that the city has in also general tree. So let me read that to you. So urban trees have a valuable role to play in increasing the sustainability of our built environment. The great contributions of the ecosystem services that the trees provide, sequestering carbon dioxide, filtering water, reducing energy use, and cleaning the air are often overlooked. Unfortunately, there is no study available that investigates the ecosystem services provided by the trees in Bakersfield. However, I did some research, and I found a study that was conducted by UC San Diego about the trees that they have on campus, and they actually estimated the ecosystem services, which are energy conservation, carbon dioxide reduction, stormwater runoff reduction, and air pollutant reduction, and that accumulated per year in savings of $2.7 million, only on their campus, which had 200,000 trees. So now I'm coming to what the Bakersfield issue is, and general tree. So the value of trees in urban environment gains on importance in times of climate change, as we experience this year in Bakersfield and elsewhere in the world, the hottest year on record. However, over the years, we have witnessed the mismanagement and unnecessary destruction of healthy, mature trees and riparian forests and landscapes in the Bakersfield area. Tree management practices must change to counteract the effects of a warming climate.
Ms. Lauer, your time is up. We do have this, if you'd like to wrap it up with a couple of sentences.
Yeah, we need more trees and not less, and I recommend, or we recommend, that general tree should be supervised a little more, because they have like a carte blanche. Nobody really checks on what they're doing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Next speaker, please.
Eddie Lane, followed by Paul Lin Festi, followed by Sharon Bril.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm Eddie Lane with the Sierra Club. Please consider the recommendations, there are nine that are passed out today, as fully within the context of Bakersfield's beautiful efforts underway now. We're asking that they be formalized by this council, by direction to the staff, for a response. These are well-thought, common-sense, constructive requests that we have of this council. What we're for, we're for protecting the fragile habitat along the Kern River, which is enjoyed and appreciated by thousands of walkers and bikers every month. We are for protecting trees which have been planted by the city in city parks, along city streets, and in the Kern River Parkway. Trees are critically important in excessive heat periods such as we have right now. Absorbing the heat, including heat generated by sidewalks and bike paths, provides shade for picnicking, for children to play under, and provide year-round doses of nature, which we all greatly need. Our recommendations are to protect our trees. They're not just about one city department or one contractor, but what we need is collaboration between the city departments to develop written procedures to protect trees. That commitment was made two years ago. A week ago, there was a new commitment during a discussion about two trees in downtown Bakersfield, a commitment that the two trees would be replaced. Well, using that principle, in the last three years, we've had 2,385 trees which have been removed under city supervision, costing the taxpayers $750,000. So we're asking the same principle that is being applied to downtown trees be applied for all of the trees which have been destroyed. Thank you. Trees are so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please.
Paul Lin Festi, followed by Sharon Bril, followed by Michael Turnipseed.
Hi, Paul Lin Festi, Ward One. I've been up to the podium a number of times, but I've never really brought an actual personal problem that I've had, so it's a little difficult for me to talk about that. I want to make it clear, I'm not talking about any kind of lawsuit or anything. I just wanted to share that two years ago, there was a sidewalk improvement program in my neighborhood around Custer, Lemay Avenue area, off of South Age, and I never got a notice that they were actually putting in sidewalks. It's just that the equipment was there one day, and they were tearing up right-of-way up on my actual property. There was a sole tree on the front yard, and it was slightly inside the area where they would tear up for the sidewalk. But they actually didn't stop at the property line because of the tree. They just kept digging up all the way to the tree trunk, tearing up a lot of the roots that were feeding the tree when I watered. The tree never really regained, God, do I want to use the word conscious? That's the only thing I can think of, healthy growth from that point on. So I wanted to say that, but then they just left it like that, covered up what they had excavated. No, I don't have any pictures or any real evidence, but it has bothered me somewhat, especially since the tree was never able to really recover from that. I don't know if there's anything the city can do about it. As I said, I'm not suing, I'm not filing a complaint, but it has been a problem that really been bugging me lately, so I just had to get that off, I just. As far as the trees downtown, I will say, two years in a row, I did have car breakdowns in the summer, so I was using Lyft to get downtown, but then when I called to get a Lyft, where are the benches where a person can sit? I have medical problems. Sometimes I'm getting over some of them, but being outside in the heat where I really needed to find a place to sit down, it's very hard to find that in downtown Bakersfield anymore. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Next speaker, please.
Sharon Bril, followed by Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sharon Bril, and I'm a resident for 22 years in Ward Four. The trees in Bakersfield have many benefits. They are a valuable asset that take 10 to 20 years to mature. They cannot be easily replaced when they die. They increase the value of our homes, and they make this community livable. I walk daily in my neighborhood in the Oaks in the southwest. Scarlet Oak Boulevard, south of Ming, had liquid amber trees that turned reds and golds in the fall. Near Mountain Oak and Scarlet Oak, there's a stand of 40-year-old oak trees providing shade and a lush appearance. About 12 to 14 years ago, the trees started to be trimmed yearly. Large limbs were removed. The canopy was raised higher and higher each year. The branches were trimmed so much that the trees looked like sticks. The shade disappeared. The trees started to die. I stopped walking along Scarlet Oak Boulevard because it was so hard for me to see the trees die. No joke. When I see the contractor in my park, I want to chain myself to a tree to make them to stop. I'm here today to plead with the council members, do not renew the contract with General Tree Service. Amend the contract to include modification that they follow the AS300 standard for trimming trees that makes the contractor liable if the tree dies, and replace the trees that have died with trees recommended by the Native Plant Society. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Bril. Welcome.
Welcome, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Amazing what pops up in news flashes. Yesterday morning, I saw a flash about how cities around the country are dropping their ShotSpotters. Cities nationwide have decided not to renew their contracts, the technology we use to identify gunshots. Audits of spot fighters show that officers could not confirm shootings in 87% of the calls in some cities. Studies from auditors and advocacy groups suggest the technology is expensive, ineffective, and an overreach of civil liberties. Many in law firms don't agree with that. But ultimately, in Fresno, there were 1,800 alerts in 2023, 169 criminal cases, 9%. In 22, 1,809 alerts resulted in 204 cases, 11%. Both years combined, only 171 victims out of 3,600 alerts were found. That's pretty expensive, and I am asking that the city council direct the staff to conduct a full audit of the ShotSpotter program and do the financial benefit that it actually provides, or doesn't. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers for this portion?
Mayor, that was our final speaker for non-agenda items. We have received one speaker card for agenda items, public statements.
Thank you. Before we take that one, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that information to us, but from what I understand, the investment that we make here in the city of Bakersfield for ShotSpotter is very minimal, isn't it? $250,000 or... Go ahead.
Councilmember Gray, mayor and council, it is a larger investment. We made an expansion of ShotSpotter, which was around that price tag, but the total price is probably over $1 million a year that we do spend on ShotSpotter.
Okay. And what are our statistics for this city?
So I don't have some of that at top of mind, but a couple things that I can tell you about ShotSpotter. We also targeted our ShotSpotter to not cover all of the city. It was limited to the areas where we had noted higher rates of gun incident use, so we're trying to be targeted and strategic in where we felt like it would provide us a return on investment. We do use that data in our gun violence reduction strategy, where we are pulling that information to help collect the overall data of where we're seeing that type of activity. Also, it's been interesting, because the ShotSpotter data a couple years ago wasn't lining up with reported crime, but that was important to us, because we felt like it was telling a story that there was unreported shots going on because of community apathy, but it was demonstrating to us that those shots were happening, because the ShotSpotter activates, and we get that information, and not just dependent on community to respond with that information. And we feel like that's going to be a more accurate, and at least in the areas where ShotSpotter covers, that's going to be a more accurate reflection of any reductions in gunshots than just reported, because we weren't seeing that the reported was really reflecting the full number of gunshots that were happening. And so as we implemented our gun violence reduction strategy, we've seen not only a reduction in homicides, a reduction in non-fatal injury shootings, we've also seen a reduction in our ShotSpotter activations, which we believe is also indicative of the fact that we are seeing less and less gun violence. So I couldn't answer all the questions about the number of activations and how many either victims have been found, and often, there aren't victims of gunshots just when there's gunshots. That's just another reflection. Often, there are gunshots that don't hit an individual or potentially even a structure, but so we don't have that data, and there could be value in doing a deeper analysis of what ShotSpotter data we do have and what it is telling us. But I can tell you, and Chief could, and we're having a public safety update in just a few minutes, and Chief has us one slide that does look at ShotSpotter, and may be able to just provide some anecdotal references that we have had several crimes that have been solved because we had officers close by a ShotSpotter activation, and they were able to respond really quickly and find the individual who had fired the weapon, because it went so quickly from that activation to our communications, and then directly to the officers. So overall, we have found it to be a useful tool, but again, we're trying to use it in a very focused way, for a very focused purpose. But it's always good to take a hard look at what we're using and making sure that it's being used in a worthwhile way.
Well, I appreciate that. I think we continually have to monitor any new systems that we put into place and make sure the data proves, but that $1 million, is that annual that we're spending annually?
Correct.
I think, again, I think that's a minimal investment to make in our community if we're having some positive return on that investment. So I would still be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to follow up on the comments of the lady about tree trimming. She's not the first person who's called me about aggressive tree trimming that looks, and I looked at it myself, a lot of times it looks super aggressive, and it has resulted in some trees dying. Could we at least, I guess Parks and Recs must supervise and let those contracts. I think they need some feedback, and if they don't get any... It isn't the tree trimmer's fault. It's the supervisor's fault. It's us if we don't oversee and take the feedback we get from people on what we ought to do. And they're right, a lot of times it looks overaggressive. So I think there needs to just be a discussion with the tree trimming company that, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about overaggressive, and maybe err on the side of underaggressive. You know, everything's kind of policy and direction from above, so if we could just have a discussion with them that, you know, we live in a desert in shade. We need shade just to survive here. A lot of times, even our architecture doesn't recognize that. I'm always amazed, even when we build shopping centers, the architects would, as though they came from Milwaukee or something, and didn't put enough shade in. So nobody can even walk around. You can't walk into Target without getting burnt all the way in, or all the new stores. So it's amazing that we live in, you know, we live in a really hot area, and we don't pay more attention to the value of shade. But I'm digressing. I would just appreciate if we could have a real serious discussion about avoiding the overtrimming of trees. I know that means you probably have to trim them more often. It's probably expensive, but we still... A personal experience is that I have a tree in my courtyard. A month ago, or two months ago, I needed to trim it. The guys came and trimmed it. Well, a month later, the whole tree is a big one, dead. I had to bring the cranes and replace the whole thing, because they weren't being supervised closely. It wasn't their fault. You have to supervise work to be sure it's done well. You know, the Army don't inspect. Need a little more inspecting. So if we could look into that and communicate how important shade is and be careful to protect these trees, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Freeman's comments, and I want to thank our friends at the Sierra Club for bringing this to our attention. I completely agree, and I think on days when it's 115 degrees consecutively, I think we're all thinking pretty, we're reflecting pretty deeply on how to keep our climates cooler, especially here in Bakersfield. And of course, we're not the only ones around the world, or even in this country, who are kind of thinking about how we reduce our heat island effect. I echo the sentiments shared by Councilmember Freeman. Is there a feedback process that exists currently? Can we look at some of the case studies that exist within other cities where they've been able to lower the temperature within even just certain neighborhoods? I know there's a couple in DC. I know Phoenix has tried some different methods where even within certain neighborhoods, they've reduced the temperatures just with trees alone, and infrastructure, even the type of asphalt that we use, the color of asphalt that's utilized, all of those kind of different techniques that have gone as far as reducing the temperature by 15 degrees in some communities, and I think we can absolutely adopt some of those elements, if that's something we can put some concentrated effort towards. I echo the sentiment. It is very warm, and shade goes very far for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Madam Clerk, I believe we have one speaker. Would you please call him for the agenda items?
Michael Turnipseed regarding the workforce development initiative.
Welcome.
Again, Madam Mayor and council, thank you for having today the opportunity. I've got a couple articles here about the UC Medical School and the expansion in Kern County. And a year and a half ago, I shared with you an article that was in the LA Times where they... the chairman of the Board of Regents said UC needs to expand and specifically called out Bakersfield and San Bernardino by name. And at the time, I said San Bernardino is only 14 miles from Riverside. We should be the leading candidate to get a full campus, and I think that's in the support of the chairman of the Board of Regents. And maybe you don't start out with a full campus, but a satellite campus. And it mentioned in the article basically that UCLA Health Network is buying up closed hospitals and expanding their network. Maybe we can get that kind of arrangement obvious with them because they are an exceptionally good healthcare system. UC Davis has a healthcare system with multiple hospitals and clinics. We don't need to invent this alone. And besides bringing the other academic needs that the community has, we should be looking seriously at pushing for an entire UC campus, whether it starts as a satellite and grows, but we need to bring that, the academics that the UC system brings and the research that they bring to help us address our problems. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final public speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Workforce Development Initiative, Medical Education. Assembly member Dr. Jasmeet Bains will provide a brief report on a regional workforce development initiative.
City manager Clay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're very pleased to have our assembly member here with us and staff present to talk about a workforce development initiative. This is consistent with many needs that have been identified in our community as well as in our economic development workforce development studies and a unique opportunity. And we'll turn time over to our assembly member, Dr. Jasmeet Bains, to fill counsel in on this topic.
Welcome, Dr. Bains.
Thank you so much, Mayor Go. It is an honor to represent Kern County in the Assembly, and it is an honor to be a native of Delano. And I am very honored to present forward my bill, which is AB 2357, which is Ida, the Grow Our Own Bill. I announced this at the state of the state, the state of the county earlier this year. And I will be honest, I did not expect the outpouring of support for this bill. Right away after I announced it, there's been numerous organizations that have jumped on in support of this bill. I am very happy to announce that it has passed the Assembly floor, it has passed the Assembly appropriations as well. It passed recently out of Senate Higher Ed. It is going to be hitting Senate appropriations, then the Senate floor, then straight to the governor's desk. AB 2357 creates an endowment fund within the state treasury as a foundational first step towards establishing a University of California Medical School in Kern County. Medical school will provide the catalyst we need to improve healthcare access for one of California's most medically underserved areas by training the next generation of medical professionals rooted in the San Joaquin Valley. In its research, the University of California identified the valley as the state's fastest-growing, most impoverished, and least healthy region of the state. The valley has a lowest ratio of licensed MDs, DOs, NPs, RNs, marriage and family therapists, counselors, and social workers. And actually, as the past chair of the California Healthcare Workforce Policy Commission, I was appointed by Governor Brown. I spent four years on that commission. We worked to identify underserved areas of healthcare, and Kern County's ratios were staggeringly low. One to 33 was the ratio of primary care providers per patient. And literally in other parts of the state, it's one to 100. Kern County has some of the worst states in the country when it comes to, the worst stats in the country when it comes to access to healthcare. The situation on the ground is expected to get even worse as we're hearing about physicians retiring early from burnout. I myself, a physician, am now in the legislature, but I still continue to practice because it is a big need to the community, and I can't do it alone. I need more and more help to make sure that people get the continuity of care that they deserve. The Association of American Medical Colleges has highlighted that many rural physicians are nearing retirement age with nearly 25 percent expected to retire by 2030. At the same time, the number of medical schools, medical school students from rural backgrounds who are the most likely to practice medicine in rural areas like myself declined 28 percent over the last 15 years. Currently, the number of medical students from rural backgrounds is just 4.3 percent. The number of medical students hailing from a rural area who are also part of an underrepresented racial or ethnic group is a staggering 0.5 percent of all medical students. I'll say that again. Black and brown kids from rural areas account for less than one-half of 1 percent of all medical students. By recruiting, educating, and training the next generation of physicians locally, the southern San Joaquin Valley can begin to erode the inequity of a decades-long doctor shortage that has contributed to the poor health outcomes of our residents. This bill is an essential step in expanding healthcare access, enhancing our local economy, and improving career pathways in the valley. I'm really honored to see it go through. Support is joining as we speak, and I'm really also really proud to announce that the newest appointment by the governor to the UC Regents was a local person from Delano by the name of Brian Komodo, just stopped by my office earlier today. And this is the first step forward to getting representation from the valley on the UC Regents Board, which has not been there. So, this is a big step forward for our community. It's a big step forward to lay the foundation for this medical school. Like I said, I did not, when I first announced this medical school, I did not expect the alarming outpouring of support that it has gotten. I've had numerous colleagues also jump on in support, and it is gaining much, much momentum at a faster pace, and it's a long time coming for Kern County. So, here to answer any questions that you guys might have, I'm literally just hitting every council in the district to make sure that we prepare and we know that this is going to be a future coming for Kern County.
Thank you, Dr. Bains. Thank you for being a champion for the Central Valley and for Kern County. It's very obvious in all of your actions that you're really looking out for us. So, thank you for trying to fill this very important need. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great thing. If you could, if you could bring that here, that is awesome.
Not if, when.
Okay. I'll be there. But one of the things I want to, I want to bring up is when we have, when we go and pick what it is that we want to have happen over the next few years, every time we go and, and think about what we're going to do over the next five, 10 years, it always includes a UC campus. So, we've talked about that. I don't know, I've been here 18 years. That's a long time. I think we need to take that serious. It's a big wish, but it is the wish that we need. And I would ask staff to maybe present the initial thoughts and dreams that we may have and incorporate that, incorporate that with what our assembly person is already doing. So, we don't want it to separate. We want it, we want it to be all together, and so, we're reacting and interacting off of every edge of it. And so, if we could do that and, and make that a priority maybe over the next month or two, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Bains. I really appreciate the work that you're doing here and what it can do for the community as a whole. You said not if, but when, so what's, what's our best-case scenario when, when we might see something?
You know, when I had first announced it, you know, keeping history into consideration, Merced took 20 years. I was expecting maybe 10 years with the momentum and the amount of support that's come out. Time will tell, but if everything goes through and it gets signed, the endowment fund opens January 1st, and it will literally at that time determine as much contributions that come in on when this medical school will come. My estimate would be with the outpouring of support, maybe even in five or six years.
Awesome. Thank you. If, if obviously there's anything we can do, just let us know. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Call any others? Councilmember Gray.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bains, for coming because we need doctors, we need, I can't even find a doctor in this city. It's a good thing I'm a healthy person, or I'd be in big trouble. So, I have a doctor over in Santa Maria just because I couldn't find a doctor here. So, we definitely need this. I think it's going to be enrich our community in ways that, you know, it's just going to be amazing. So, I'm just kind of curious if you have, if you have a site that you have your eyes on for this?
You know, that is the most popular question, actually. Every council has asked that of me, and it's just too early to really set your eyes. My, I, I work as a doctor, so I triage, and right now, I'm totally focused on getting this bill through the Assembly, through the Senate, which has already been through the Assembly, but through, and then once this endowment fund opens up January 1st, then we can definitely get down and roll our sleeves up and figure out where it needs to be. But right now, it's, you know, all, I, all hands on deck to get this through because this, like, you know, Councilmember Smith and Weir had said, this is a long time coming, it's a wish come true. And what, one of the things that I did experience, which was sad, it was the first time I've experienced this, is Sacramento has this idea that kids in Kern are not the smartest. And one of the comments that was made in a meeting was, you guys have the highest of literacy rates and the highest in education in the country. Your kids can't make that leap from this to medical school. And I said, and you should probably invest more in STEM and research. And I said, well, we will definitely invest in STEM and research, but that doesn't hold us back from this. And let me tell you this, what you just said is what someone said to me, and I am now a doctor and an Assembly member. So, don't ever say that about my kids.
Yes, good for you. I appreciate you being an advocate for us because the sky's the limit with anybody that wants to put in the hard work and see themselves crossing over that bridge, they can do it. So, that's great. You're, you're a good cheerleader for us. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Dr. Bains, thank you again. Dr. Bains spends her week in Sacramento, then she comes and spends all weekend working with her patients. That's how much she cares about her patients and our communities. Thank you so much for your boldness also. We know that when pushback is there, you are very bold in making sure that you deliver for our community. So, we just thank you for that. I was pleased to sign a letter of support on behalf of the city of Bakersfield for this bill. So, thank you, and we wish you all the best and stand with you.
No, I appreciate the support. I'm a doctor first, politician second. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor Go, do we need a motion to receive the report?
Yes, we do. Councilmember Weir.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Oh, his is not working. Can you, Councilmember Freeman, press your red button for help, or the help button, the help button?
Oh, over here.
Is there anything that you need to do to activate it, or should we just take a voice vote?
I'll go ahead and do.
Oh, can you do a voice vote? Councilmember Arias says, technology services, can you please attend to this? We'll take a voice vote, please. Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
No. Okay, go ahead and do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Arias?
Here. Or, excuse me, aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cor?
Aye.
Motion is approved with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent.
Oh, actually, we need to have public speakers on this item. So, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Saying none, we will just move on now to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Reports item 3B, a public safety update and presentation will be provided by Bakersfield Police Department Chief Greg Terry.
Mayor and Council, we have Chief Greg Terry here to provide a public safety update. This was a referral request from the Safe Neighborhoods Committee to share similar content. This includes data from 2023, but also some early looks at data from 2024, and some also look-aheads at things we're going to be working on this coming year. Chief Terry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Police Chief Greg Terry. We're going to provide you quite a bit of information here over the next few minutes, and so, just kind of hold on, and we'll move through it. Obviously, our community has significant public safety challenges in a variety of different ways, and we could spend a lot of time probably walking through each one of these slides and really getting into the, into the details of it, and it's worthy of it at times as well. But what I'm going to attempt to do here this afternoon is really like, like Mr. Clay said, kind of give you an overview of some of the outcomes last year, 2023, compared to the year before, and talk a little bit about what we're seeing so far in this year, talking about some of the priorities that we have as well. So, you've seen some of this probably at Safe Neighborhoods and also through the budget process. This is just reported crime citywide and what that looks like, broken down by both property and violent crime. Overall, there was a 12 percent reduction in reports, crime reports, in 2023 versus 2022. There was an increase in violent crime, reported violent crime. The most significant increases were in sexual assault, rape at 1 percent, and 8 percent in aggravated assaults. Significant decline, again, for the second year in a row in homicide. We also saw decreases in robbery and auto theft as well. And I say reported crime because it's the subject of a lot of our conversations about how much is being reported to us. Does this, this data reflect the experience of community members across our city? And in some respects, I would say it probably doesn't. We know that it doesn't in some of the community, in some of our businesses and things, because we know that there are, that are, that there are crimes that are not being reported to us, and it certainly isn't reflected here, and there's a lot of different reasons about that. And so, I, I report this to you because this is what the data has, but also acknowledge that there's perhaps more to the story, and we need to continue to work together. A quick overview of violent crime. So, the table there on the left is really gun violence specific, non-fatal shootings citywide. In 2022, there were 86, reduced by 13 percent in 2023. Specifically within those gang, those gun violence numbers, gang violence in particular, and we saw 59 percent reduction in the number of gang-related shootings across the city. ShotSpotter activations, we were just talking about that. Again, saw another 8 percent reduction in the number of activations. I do think it is worthy, and it would be worthy for us to report out and to talk about what that experience ShotSpotter has been. We have six miles, six square miles of ShotSpotter coverage in our city. It was expanded from three miles to six miles, I think in 2020 or 2021. do have the data also of what arrests have been made, what firearms have been, and what cases have been cleared, and we can certainly report out some of that. Part of shot spotters, the value of it is shot spotter activations in our city are where our city has experienced historically the most gun violence. The community members living in there, in some respects over these years, have given up. We know from experience, and we know from a fact and talking out with them, is they don't report a large number of gun, of gunshots because it was an everyday occurrence. It was not an unusual event to have shots fired through your window or shots being fired outside your home. It just wasn't reported. And we continue to see some of that, that we have many more activations, shot spotter alerts, than we do actual reports from the community. And that should concern us because that, that does reflect some apathy, some, some feeling that perhaps they don't matter, that the police don't care, and those kinds of things are very important to us. And so as we talk about shot spotter, I do absolutely agree that we should get into the details and talk about what are some of the outcomes from it so that we know what that data shows. But there's also things that are difficult to quantify. And that's the quality of life and the fear and all of those things that go into people who are having, where these things are occurring primarily in our community. The bottom there is just kind of give you, again, a year-to-date total homicides. We are in the same time period. So the first six months of, of 2023, we had 14 homicides during the first six months of this year. We've also had 14 homicides, so no change. Again, that's, if you remember, the last two years, we've had consecutive declines in total homicides across the city. So we are keeping pace with where we were last year. And you can see a 27% reduction in the total of non-fatal shootings that have occurred in the first six months of this year. Violent crime, certainly need, domestic violence is a violent crime. And over the last several years, we've continued to see an increase in the number of calls and the number of reports in domestic violence. And so this is very concerning to us. And we have numerous detectives that are assigned to this division to follow up on these kinds of calls. But there's much more to work to be done. We work very closely with some community providers to try to educate as well as to do enforcement around domestic violence, but is continuing to be an escalating type of call that we're seeing in our community. And so we are certainly making those a priority, and there's more to work to be done there. Again, a little bit of flashback over some of the budget conversations and, again, some of the outcomes with regard to the number of 911 calls and the number of calls dispatched last year versus the year before. As you can see, almost 300,000 911 calls, an increase of about 7% dispatch calls. So we had about nearly 750,000 phone calls come into the police department last year. Out of those nearly three-quarter of a million calls, 261,000 calls were actually entered and dispatched. And so that was about a 5% increase over the year before. One of the goals has been, in terms of staffing across the police department, was, and one of the things we've been measuring is how quickly are we answering those 911 calls. And our goal is to answer 95% of all of our 911 calls within 20 seconds. And so you can see, last year, we made some additional improvement over the year before at 93% or just over. Patrol response times. What matters most when people call us is that we get there as soon as we can and be ready to handle and deliver the service that they expect from us. And so this is a very quick look at our top three priority calls, one, two, and three, and what our response times were in 2023 compared to the two previous years. Traffic fatalities over a two-year period, 2023 and 2022, significant reduction in the number of pedestrian fatalities over the last, over the year before. What you're reflecting there in terms of the primary collision factors is kind of been a pretty steady category of factors that we are seeing in most of our traffic collisions. Bring it a little bit more current and more focused on this year. What this represents is the number of traffic collisions that have occurred January to June 2023 versus January to June 2024. So as you can see, the, the number of injury traffic collisions over the last, over the first six months of this year, we're really on pace with where we were in 2023. And it's broken down by the different categories there. And those numbers reflect the number of collisions. Same look with fatal traffic collisions for the same time period, January to June 2023 versus January to June 2024, broken down by type. You know, we had a significant reduction in pedestrian fatalities in 2023, and we're continuing to see that, that trend go down. So those are very positive things. Much work to be done around that in particular. And I do think we can continue to make an impact, and it's certainly worthy of our effort to do that. I wanted this map in here. It's, it's difficult to see, to, for you to understand and really get a lot of detail out of it. But I want you to see, this is the first quarter of 2024. It's a heat map of where our collisions have occurred, or where collisions are occurring in our city during the first quarter of this year. The little dots on the map represent where the traffic unit is issuing citations. And so you can see where we're trying to use data to inform where we're working and concentrate to the extent that enforcement is the appropriate intervention for some of what we are seeing and some of the collision factors. That's where we're focusing our work. And so I, I give you this so that you have an understanding and have a visual picture of some of the technologies and some of the data and, and our approach to where we're working on these different issues. Organized retail theft continuing to be an issue across our community. This data also represents the first quarter of 2024 compared to the last quarter of 2023. So over the last six months is the time period. The overall number of reports declined, but you saw an increase in the number of felony thefts, misdemeanor thefts declined. Our organized retail theft unit, it's a special unit that was organized and put into work in October of last year. And since then, that's a reflection of some of the numbers in the terms of the number of, the value of the assets they recovered, the number of arrests that have been made, and the cases cleared. But we are still continuing to see that some businesses are not reporting all of these kinds of offenses to us. And so, again, as we talked about some of the overall crime report numbers, we know that there's more to the story there, and we need to continue to work with that. We have an organized retail crime collaborative, collaborative within the police department run by our community relations unit. And they've been fantastic and really developed some great partnerships with some of our commercial big box retailers, as well as some of the smaller mom-and-pop type stores. And they sit down every month and work together and share information about what they're experiencing across the businesses, sharing intelligence, sharing photographs, sharing vehicle descriptions, and a variety of those kinds of things. Our detectives are also there working with them so that we can see trends and we can see where different things are occurring and, and opportunities to intervene and work with our businesses. We need more businesses to continue to partner with us in this way, and we're certainly encouraging them to do that. You might remember, a couple of years ago, we talked about spider tech, and that was a sort of a community engagement tool, where when you have a call for service into the police department, you get some push notifications back to you. How was our service? What was your, how was your interaction with the dispatcher? Did you feel like the officer that you spoke to was empathetic and understanding of your issue? And giving the community members an opportunity to give us feedback on our, on our services. And I threw this in here as one of the questions that is asked in that feed, feedback, and it really is there to measure the community sentiment. How safe do you feel living and being in the city of Bakersfield? And so you can see that there's certainly room for improvement about how our community's perspective is. One of the things about this particular tool that we're, we really like is that we have six police zones across the city, and we're able to get this kind of data across all of those six zones, and specific to those six zones so that we can, again, another mechanism of feedback and know where we need to do some more work and engage with the community. And then there's some more, a couple of upcoming park events that we have for the remainder of the summer. Staffing. We shared a little bit of this during the budget presentations as well. We are continuing to, to go full speed at staffing. We just had an academy graduate last week, or two weeks ago now. We have another academy that's underway now. But we are, seem to have been now for more than a year struggling around this 30 to 40 vacancy and can't seem to, to get over the hump. But we're continuing to, to work at it. Our recruitment, this is the number of people that have been hired since we engaged in earnest in this effort in July of 2020, 2019. The number of academies completed, the graduation rate, and what the average class size. I would tell you, our, and we've made a lot of gains in how we get people into the academy and how we keep them. And so one example of this is, so when somebody's going through the police officer process, we engage with them directly, help work them, work with them through the application process. A member of the police department recruitment training, team and training staff begin engaging with them directly. And we host volunteer workout sessions so that they can physically prepare for the, for the police department or for the police academy. But it also gets them acclimated and, and starts to build some relationships in the months leading up to the academy. And what we have found is that the success rate for those recruits that attend these pre-academy sessions makes a significant difference in the outcome. So if the, over the last several academies, those that don't attend any of these volunteer pre-academy sessions, the graduation rate is just 53%. But those that engage with us and those that come to about 10, at least 10 of these pre-academy sessions, you can see the graduation rate is significant, significantly higher. This is just one of the examples of the different things that we've tried to employ over the last several years to make sure that we're hiring the enough people, but making, making sure that we're hiring the right people, putting them in the academy, and then retaining them and keeping them through the academy. Because it's, it's a very difficult and stressful experience. Priority projects, I have three things that I'll talk about here, but really, again, a reminder of our approach to this is, we are a community policing agency, and we are, that is our philosophy and our approach to solving the public safety issues in our community. And that really involves these three things, problem solving, really identifying what are those chronic issues that seem to persist and are occurring across our city that the police department is primarily responsible for. And no matter how many times we respond to it, and no matter what the intervention is, it just doesn't go away. So we, it's, not every call for service is a problem because it doesn't have those characteristics. So we define problem solving as those chronic issues that continue to persist that the police department is responsible for, and we need to find a way to resolve it. That's a, that's a key part of our philosophy. And then trying not to do it alone. Public safety is a shared responsibility. And so we've worked very hard over the last several years to increase the number of partnerships to focus on these long-term chronic issues because very often, the root cause is not anything the police department can solve. And yet, we're the ones that are responsible for it because there's no one else to call. And so partnerships are a very important part of that. And then in terms of the organizational structure is really about, do we have the right people in the right places doing those kinds of things? Do we have the capacity to identify? Do we have the capacity to get data that can inform some of our work? Who do we have doing that? Are there officers? Are they civilians? So we've done a lot. And with your support, we've civilianized a lot of positions over the last couple of years. And that's important so that we do have police officers doing things and going to places that only police officers can, can handle. One of the projects that'll be coming to you, well, it was, you approved it in the budget, was the Real-Time Information Center. And this really is going to be something that's never existed in the police department, but it is a room, as you would imagine it, with a wall full of monitors. And it really is an integration of both public and private camera feeds, emergency calls, social media, a variety of things that somebody will be sitting there monitoring when there's a call for service coming in about a particular address, that we can leverage whatever resources we have and look at that particular call, that particular location, and see what's going on very quickly. What is the best resource that goes, do we actually need to go there? Somebody's reporting something, but isn't an actual event. If we can get guys, get eyes on it right away, we might determine that, in fact, that's not what's occurring, and we can adjust the priority of the call. Just a variety of things that I think will bring a value to our community. And so, again, it will be something that we will need to study and measure and be able to report out on. But I truly believe that it's going to affect our response times, it's going to affect our ability to hold people accountable for the crimes that they're committing because it's going to enable us to respond more specifically to a specific location, to a particular individual. And this kind of activity, or this kind of footage and technology can help guide our responses to that. Our Impact Team, you might remember that, that is the team that's focused on homelessness and, and the criminal conduct that comes out of that. The team has been expanded over the last couple of years with your support. And again, this team is primarily are the police department's response to, and developing the partnerships to address the, the criminal impact of those that are, are homeless. This team is integrated a lot more than it has been in previous years, working with other city departments and other law enforcement agencies outside of the police department to try to be much more data-informed about how we're working, where our approach really is, is mirroring some of our work with gun violence. We know that the vast majority of our people or of our issues and the chronic issues are really limited to a small number of people. So how can we leverage the resources and, precious as they are, to focus on those that are most, that are most impacting our community in these ways? And so this team is really focused on doing that. One of the more recent outcomes of, as we dive into the data, is we've recognized that many of the people that the Impact Team arrests every month are also on probation or under some sort of supervision. And many of the people that we repeatedly arrest during the course of a month are on probation. And so we recently had a meeting with the probation department to, again, try to bring more of their resources so that they're more aware of what's going on with some of the people that they're supervising and try to share some of that responsibility and leverage whatever controls that they have to focus on those kinds of, those kinds of issues. So again, begins to reduce the demand on the police department. And again, we're not sharing, or we're not bearing the full weight of the, of the responsibility. Last thing I have for you is the stipulated judgment and the progress that we've been making. We're in year three. Just a very quick overview of the stipulated judgment. It has 211 paragraphs. We've broken it up into 12 different project teams that are all working simultaneously across the agreement. There's about 800 compliance measures made up out of those 211 paragraphs. And you can see about 75% of that number, we are in progress and, and working towards. And just about 3% of, of those compliance measures have been now, we are now in full and effective compliance with that. So again, just an overview of where we are with that. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to the public first for comments and then come back to the council. Madam Clerk, do we have any public requests?
Mayor Go, I've not received any speaker cards.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Really appreciate your work, your attitude, and, and your progress. So things are moving in the right direction, although it's, it's very difficult. I'll first comment on the shot spotter. More data is always better, but I don't think just measuring the amount of people that you find dead is, is the only measurement. The, you know, fewer activations, maybe the shot spotters are deterrent. Like you said, the neighborhoods, people realize, you know, things are going on, people will be more concerned. The domestic violence, and, and like you said, a lot of problems that get to the police are community problems that, you know, can and should be worked on elsewhere. And domestic violence, I think, is, you know, relationship counseling and churches, community places can do a lot in that direction. By the time it gets to you, it's going down the wrong path.
Right.
On the traffic collisions, good to see all of them going down, even just, you know, vehicle on vehicle. We had 18 deaths, you know, last year, January to June, and down to 11. So, you know, we talk a lot about the pedestrian bicycle, but there's way too many fatalities and way too many collisions, which By the time it gets to you, it's going down the wrong path.
Right.
On the traffic collisions, good to see all of them going down, even just, you know, vehicle on vehicle. We had 18 deaths, you know, last year, January to June, and down to 11. So, you know, we talk a lot about the pedestrian bicycle, but there's way too many fatalities and way too many collisions, which is cars in general. So, I think, you know, and again, that's something by the time you get involved, it's, you know, what we talk about is changing the environment, changing the way we build roads, so that they're safer for everybody. The public input, are you seeing a transition? Are you getting more public input? I know we've been working on community involvement for some time. Is that a shift or not really?
Councilmember Smith, Mayor, it's, we're, there's no shortage of public input.
Community trust, maybe.
Well, there you go. But no, we have an incredible community that we hear from every day, that is very supportive. And those that are critical of us are still supportive, because this is their community, and we welcome all of that. And so, I would say overall, yes, we have, we have a lot of work being done, and as you come out to the community events, just a few weeks ago, we were up at Jefferson Park, 30 or 40 different community organizations that were there. We're going to have two more events this summer. We're seeing more people engaged in giving us information in a variety of different ways. And so, no, I definitely, I want to believe, and I think anecdotally, we feel that we are seeing more engagement. The level of trust, you know, that comes from building those kinds of relationships. That's why I put that sentiment up there about, how do people generally feel? And we're trying to meet people where they are. We can go into these different zones within the city, because we have the measurement now of that community sentiment, and know what the issues are for them. And I think that's the key part of not only eliciting their cooperation and participation, but also the trust to know that we care and that we're working with them to solve the issues. And so, no, I do believe that we are seeing progress.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I'll just finish up with something I've talked about a lot of times, I know we're working on, is, you talked about repeat offenders and, you know, a small percentage, and we really, we need accountability, and we need some timeouts, some jail time for these repeat offenders, and I know staff's working on it, and hopefully, we can make some real progress in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Chief, thank you so much for your efforts and the efforts of your team. Just following up on what Councilmember Smith said, could you just talk about some of the stats related to quality-of-life crimes, repeat offenders who go in for a very short period of time, and share that with the public?
Yeah, I can. What comes to my mind most is the Impact Team and the work that they're doing across the city. The Impact Team arrests about 200 people a month for quality-of-life, low-level, very much chronic issues. And 80 to 90% consistently, 80 to 90% of those individuals are released within three to 12 hours. So, they are right back in the same spot. Business, the businesses are calling us, "Why is this happening again? You didn't do anything." No, we did. They were only gone a few hours, because that's the process. And so, yeah, they arrest about 200 a month, just that team. 80 to 90% of them are out within three to 12 hours. What we're also finding, and I talked a little bit about why we've gone and reached out to probation, is we're also continuing to see a large number of those people be arrested multiple times during the course of a month, and the same issues going on in the same locations, the same criminal behavior. And so, we, and we looked at, as we looked at that, what that number is, we were seeing that 20, 25% of them are on probation. So, we're bringing probation to the table to try to help us resolve that issue. Certainly, we have partnerships with Kern Behavioral Health. We have co-response teams. Not only the Met Team, but we also have additional co-response teams of police officer and a mental health clinician in the field, trying to identify who those, the individuals that we contact most often, and really try to work with them and understand, why is this behavior continuing to occur over and over again? But the bottom line is, there are, there is very little that we can do on the accountability. We can go there, we can arrest them for the underlying crime that was just committed, we will book them into the jail. We're having ongoing conversations with the sheriff. The sheriff has been supportive. He understands that we do have significant challenges related to that, but there are limitations there as well. But we're continuing to push, because the impact to our community is so great. So, we are trying to pull every lever we can with the sheriff and working out and looking at what other options might lie for us to be able to book people in different places. And we're exploring a lot of different things to be able to solve this issue.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Chief. Good presentation. Two questions. One was the increase in domestic violence over the last three years, and I guess my question was, do you think we've really had that significant of an increase or more reporting? I just wondered, because I, or if we have, you know, do you have any opinion as to the cause?
Councilmember Freeman, Mayor, it's a good question. I also suspect, and I was thinking about it as I sit here, and I wish I'd included this, is, you know, the first year on this graph is 2020, and we know that that's a year that's unlike any other. And so, is it a return to what we've seen traditionally? I don't know the answer to that. That's potentially, that's one of the things we're going to go look, I wish I had had the answer as I was sitting here preparing for this, but is this, this increase that we're seeing actually a return to what we saw prior to COVID? We know that people being in their homes, not working, not going to school, we know that there were a lot of issues that were created from that or developed from that. And so, is this what we are seeing, some of that? Is it a return? Is it actual, are we doing a better job of people feeling like they can report, where they feel like there's, through the Open Door Network and other partners, where they feel safe reporting it? So, we're seeing more? I don't have enough evidence to tell you that. My fear is that it is, not my fear, my, I think there's a lot of data to support, it is severely under-reported. And so, there is more occurring in our community because of the dynamics that are occurring in people's homes than we know. And so, again, are, is this, is this an increase? Is it an increase in reporting? Is it a return to what we've kind of normally seen across our city in terms of numbers? I wish I had the direct answer for you tonight, but I don't.
Okay. Guess we're all disappointed that you didn't say, show us that it's going down.
Yeah.
It definitely isn't getting better. My other question was, related to our gang problem. When I came on the council seven and a half years ago, one of the first things I did was met with, I don't know if you were among the people, but it was like the gang squad. There were about six guys, and it was a big slide presentation at the time. We had 33 identified gangs, and then it's who they are. I was wondering, what's our, you know, is our gang problem significantly reduced? Is it worse? Are we getting new gangs in from out of town? Kind of, what's the gang situation now?
Well, we most often talk about gang violence in terms of violent crime, and so, and that's reflected in our homicide numbers and our number of gang-related shootings. And we've seen significant reductions in that level of violence. We know that within gang crime in particular, and particularly violent crime, the reality is, there are not a large number of people across the city that are willing to go and walk up to somebody and shoot them, thankfully. The data shows that there's a small number of people that are willing to commit that level of violence. And so, our CalVIP program and our strategy over the last several years are to focus on those individuals that are most prone to commit an act of violence. And also focus our resources and our efforts on those that have been the victim of violence, because they're very active, they're very likely to retaliate, and it creates this cycle. And so, we're working very closely to interrupt that. And so, certainly gangs are involved in financial crime and narcotic trafficking and a lot of those kinds of things. And I would tell you, even though I don't have some of the data to support it directly, that I do not think that that is decreasing. But the violent crime, we are seeing changes, and we are seeing sustained and consistent changes year over year with gang-related shootings and gang-related homicides.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you for taking on our referral and coming to make the presentation. I think Councilmember Gray and I felt that all this information was too good and of great quality for us to bury it in committee, and we just had to share the great work of PD and the great work of your leadership team. So, thank you for bringing this forward. I also share my colleagues' concerns and your concerns about the domestic violence increase. I too wonder whether or not this is, you know, a function of population growth, you know, are these part of national trends? And really, at the end of the day, what can we do and what's already being done? I'm sure your team is taking a look at that, because frankly, it's making our violent crime look as though it's getting worse, when in actuality, the rest of violent crime is actually going down. And so, I think, I would like to make a referral tonight that, you know, the team take a good look at that over the past couple of years, and really start to understand what the data is telling us, and really understand what kind of options we have, both as a city, but also from, you know, a collective impact standpoint. What is it that's already been done in the community, and where can we help support and make better? Turning to staffing, it's very clear that your team is working incredibly hard alongside our human resources department to try and recruit and retain. Post the Great Retirement, you know, at that time, it seemed like we were losing a lot of folks with a lot of institutional knowledge, who maybe were with the department for many, many years. You know, are we still seeing the same sort of fallout? You know, where's the attrition taking place? Is it the new recruits? What does that look like today?
Councilmember Arias, through the mayor, it's, yes, we are still seeing that, and I would tell you, and again, I wish I'd have brought those numbers, we've seen a significant increase, certainly this year, of separations, retirements, people leaving the state, people leaving the profession, people leaving the state to go be a police officer in some other state, kind of all of those kinds of things. But some of the gains that we've made over the last couple of years, we've lost because of an increase in those retirements and separations. And so, I can tell you, the first six months of this year, we saw an increase in the number of separations versus last year. And so, it's not a positive trend for us at all, but it's a challenge for us, absolutely is.
So, is the department as a whole just getting increasingly younger and younger?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, about 75% of our patrolmen who are out there working and responding to calls for service have less than five years, and in fact, five years on the job. And if you look at the entirety of the department, that's pretty consistent all the way up, including myself, that a large percentage of the police department, both in tenure and in rank and in place, have less than five years. And so, we are very young. That brings a lot of great energy and a lot of, a lot of really positive things, but yes, experience walking out the door, that's not easily gained back.
Okay. I know a couple of years ago, this council invested, at your recommendation, that we create a longevity pay structure. Can you help remind me what those years are, where, and maybe, feel free to send me an email, I know it's a little complex. It would be good to just take a look at that. I know it was super helpful.
Yeah, there were like benchmarks of five or seven years, nine or 12, 15, 20, 25, and 30, I think, off the top of my head. And so, and we did, when that came out, we retained several of the people that had been here in excess of 20 to 25 years. We held on to probably seven or eight that I can think of, that were ready to retire in management and command-level positions. We held on to them for a couple of years. So, it was, it was a great, great effect and impact on us.
Great. We'll keep up the good work on that front, and I want to turn to the act of transportation piece. Really also happy to hear that those collision numbers are going down, particularly the fatalities. But have we really started to hone in on a couple of those key corridors? I know you showed a heat map of where those collisions are taking place, but have we started to list out, what are those, you know, top one through five, six or seven key corridors where we're seeing the most number of collisions?
Yeah, the traffic, the traffic division within the police department uses that kind of data to inform where they go for enforcement. Obviously, there are a lot of other elements related to traffic safety other than enforcement, but from the police department perspective, we're using data like this to inform on a daily basis where the officers are going to work. I don't know if that answered your question directly.
No, that absolutely answers part of it. But from a planning standpoint, are we also taking a look at that data as well?
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor, and Council. I would say we have taken some case-by-case looks, but there's actually been recent conversation about taking a more comprehensive approach to look at more of the injury or fatal collisions, and really do a diagnosis of the specific instances that led to, you know, that collision occurring, but then also looking at the built environment around there. And we actually have received some interest from community stakeholders that have been participating in the city in these efforts around, you know, greater traffic safety. And kudos to our Public Works Director for recognizing that we have a bicycle safety coalition that exists today, but we probably could look at using that group maybe a little more intensely and intentionally to start taking hard looks at specific instances that we can start to just better diagnose what really is happening in key areas and locations, as well as key instances. So, it's actually something that we've just been talking about, you know, sort of reinvigorating that group with a newer intent and purpose. I think consistent with your line of questioning is really look hard at both specific, again, instances, as well as patterns and trends in where we're seeing these issues occur.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I was just having this conversation earlier with a colleague about, you know, all of the capital improvement projects that we invest in every single year, through budget, through mid-year, and otherwise. And it would, you know, if the real goal of this council is to, you know, reduce the number of folks that are, you know, dying on our streets because of traffic collisions, then it really makes sense to me that we should be targeting those very corridors that have the highest fatality rates. So, no, I appreciate the work there. And I'll finish my comments off by saying, incredible job with CalVIP and CalVIP program. It almost brought me to tears when you shared the data in committee. I know that it's been, you know, it's required increasing amounts of work and collective effort and collaboration, so that we can continue to bring down the number of homicides, the number of gun violence incidents. And so, I just wanted to tip my cap off to you, Chief, for your leadership and your work there. And also, Chief Stratton, I know that he has been deeply involved in that work to all of our community partners, but also want to say thank you to Christian Clegg. I know, Christian, you don't like to take a lot of credit, but I think this has a lot to do with your vision and leadership, and your ability to bring together all of our community partners. And I really appreciate, I think on Slide 3, one of the quotes is from Helen Keller, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." So, with that, just want to say, thank you.
I appreciate that. We are certainly not doing it alone, and that's a reflection of who our partners are in this work.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I think it illuminates a lot of just community questions around, that we are usually always fielding as well, so this is really just good for the cause to know. I too, and this follows conversations you and I have had about domestic violence, and calls I too receive from community members, and just to kind of build on some of the points made from my colleagues, but also want to echo the sentiment that when you receive the call, it's usually when, you know, things are at their worst or at their peak. But it's also, just to give it maybe another point of view, it's when someone has the most courage to call, and that's when you receive that call. So, too often, it feels as though domestic violence issues become like a household issue or a communal issue or a cultural issue, when in fact, you are clearly fielding close to 2,500 calls that you are actually receiving. And I can't imagine, actually, I can, because I'm receiving the calls when someone is not able to call the police department, but they are in some very violent situations. So, clearly, this is a societal issue that we need to think through, but also be creative, because it is a more sensitive crime that's occurring. And I do think, you know, maybe the same philosophy can be applied for other crimes, is this truly something for our department to address, or is this for an organization or a church? But I think that can go to any crime. If it's coming to us, you know, we're doing our due diligence in addressing it. But in being creative, kind of, I think the incredible work done with CalVip is such a model of how community collaboration with our police department, with those kind of, with that kind of innovation of idea, how we're able to address something that is having a social impact on all of us. Perhaps we can use a similar model for domestic violence. And I know there's, there are tons of precedents, precedent studies as well as examples in other communities as to what really works. Are there different partnerships we currently have that would just be good to hear out loud? Or what are some things that you're kind of thinking through that would be good for the council to hear and kind of think through as well and be a thought partner with you? I myself would love to join that conversation just because of the volume of calls I get around this issue. And a lot of the times, I'll just be frank, I feel helpless as well as to how can I truly help? Because that person might have the courage today to give the police department a call, but what does tomorrow look like for them? What does support mean? What does support look like when they don't feel as courageous on day three or day 13? So I wanted to share those initial thoughts and how we can add elements of cultural competency as we have with the kind of the CalVip model to something that we're clearly seeing increasing just calls with. And I want to second Councilmember Arias's referral as well. I had a similar referral, but I'm glad he made it tonight to just kind of, just have a better understanding of the calls and what comes next, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you so much, Chief, for coming. When Councilmember Arias and I heard this report first in committee, I was extremely impressed. Assistant Chief Stratton was there to answer some of our questions. And the thing that came out of it to me more than anything was the presentation was how well you as a department are thinking outside the box. You're not just applying traditional policing efforts, but you're, there's such a care coming from the hearts of our police officers all the way up to your position that you all really care about our community. You're not just policing, but you're caring about us. And I saw that in a few ways when we put together, you all put together, the 911 clinicians so that we can talk some of those people that are just having a really difficult time. They have a number they can call and somebody that can say, hey, I understand what you're going through, let's talk about this. And which helped the whole city because now you're not sending your officers out as often. I was really impressed with CalVip and all the partners that are coming in and helping with when there is a gun violence, you've got, you've got people, boots on the ground that are going to those families so that they don't retaliate. And I think that's huge. And that community collaboration of putting that all together, it was just, I was really amazed. I was like, like Councilmember Arias, at times my eyes did tear up because I'm thinking, this is just awesome. And from what I understand in that meeting, there's other cities that are looking at some of the things that you all are proposing and doing now. Is that correct?
Councilmember Gray, the model that we've employed over the last couple of years is one that is shared by different cities. And it is a proven strategy to try to reduce gun and gang violence in particular. But yes, we model some of what after other cities are doing. And we do have frequent conversations with, I was just in Madison, Wisconsin, a couple of weeks ago, meeting with their police department, talking about some of these things. And they're likely to travel out here to hear about CalVip and what we are doing as well. And so it is definitely something that we're sharing in the profession across the country.
Well, that can make us very proud. The other thing on domestic violence, you know, I think about this a lot. We live in a very terminus world today, you know? Inflation's gone through the roof, gas prices, food, people are having a difficult time just trying to feed their families. And I think that adds to a lot of this pressure, it's like a pressure tank that our citizenry is under. And today I was talking with our city manager and he was sharing some ideas that you all are talking about putting into place. Is it okay to share that? I think that would be great information. I was really impressed with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray, Mayor and Council. And Chief can help shore me up if I'm off base on any of this. But we have noted that both for domestic violence and even for those that are experiencing chronic homelessness, that some of the same key principles that we've applied to gun violence intervention can be applied to very high-risk individuals, very much so in that we find that there's a very small number of individuals that are responsible for a very high percentage of the types of arrests or offenses, again, related to both domestic violence and those that are, again, chronically making, you know, quality of life nuisance crimes. And so that real focus on data of understanding really who is at highest risk so that you can have a good return on your investment in staff resources for those individuals, but also intervening and having a direct intervention with those individuals to express concern and care, but then also reflecting that if they don't try to change course, that they are on our radar, they have our attention, we know they're at high risk. But then also offering services and opportunities for them to step away from that scenario. And so as I shared with Councilmember Gray, we're exploring possibilities of partnerships with community-based organizations, just like we did on the CalVip side, that we needed community partners as trusted messengers to go and offer those services and engage and mediate with individuals, that there are institutions and organizations that do that related to domestic violence as well. There are groups here in Kern that do that work. But if we, we find that not only if that work is occurring, but if it's coordinated and again, focused on the right individuals, you can have better outcomes. So we want to reach out to those groups and coalitions working on domestic violence in our community and coordinate the information that we have about those that are at highest risk and that would best benefit from those interventions. So we're looking to, you know, shift some of our resources to follow some of these same patterns. We do want to be careful to not take our eye off the biggest priority issues of, you know, shootings, homicides and dilute our work too much, but we feel we can learn from these, these good practices and dedicate the resources that we do have towards those areas in just, again, a more focused way. Would you add anything to that, Chief Terry?
Said it very well.
Well, I've got one other question. This year, the Sacramento passed the CARE Court. I don't know how else to say that. But can you bring us up to date on this CARE Court situation, either you or the city manager?
Sure, I'll take that one, Chief. Thank you. So CARE Court, as legislatively enabled, can go into effect in Kern County at the beginnings of next year. There were some pilot counties that have been working on it this year. CARE Court, I think it's, you know, good to just share the candid feedback with council that it's not necessarily within the city's purview. It's more so in the purview of the county criminal justice and behavioral health systems. We have reached out to those partners to inquire and ask about their preparations. And from the information that we have is that there is still a fair amount of planning that's being done and observing these other pilot counties for how they have used CARE Court. But the systems here in Kern have yet to be fully developed of what CARE Court's going to look like, who's going to make those referrals, who's going to process those requests for folks to go through CARE Court. And I think also, you didn't necessarily ask this question, Councilmember Gray, I think it's relevant to the line of questioning, is there's another bill that was passed, SB43, which allows local governments to address substance use with treatment, different treatment options. We're actually able to essentially, you know, require individuals to go through substance use treatment programs. That also doesn't take effect until next year. And then interestingly, the ballot measure that's on the ballot currently from the district attorneys that looks at some of our law enforcement laws, is that there are clauses there as well that can compel individuals into treatment. While those policy pieces are being put into place, which are good new developments, we have to have the operational pieces also set up in our community. And each one of those tools probably won't address, you know, the 100 or 200 chronic individuals that we're having challenges with. But we do believe that if you have four or five different options, at least it gives you the ability to select the option that's best suited to that individual. So CARE Court's not going to address every individual that is, you know, having chronic issues, but it may address a certain percentage, maybe 10%. And same for SB43. And so we're anxiously awaiting for those tools, but we're also a little bit nervous that we haven't seen the full build-out of those tools created in these other agencies that, you know, have the responsibility and ability to manage those programs. And we know it's a big lift and we're here to help our partners, but we haven't received those details yet.
Well, it's good news that the state of California is looking at this a little bit different. And then I've got one other big question, just very quickly, because I know we're running out of time here. Is a Supreme Court decision that just overturned the Ninth District Circuit Court, how is that going to improve our lifestyle here in Bakersfield?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Gray, the mayor and council, that is a question on, I think, everyone's mind, and so I'll do my best to address it. First, I would reflect that the city of Bakersfield already has ordinances on the books that do not allow for, you know, overnight public camping. And we've been enforcing those, you know, within the resources that we have. We respond to encampment, you know, notifications either from the community or that we notice on our own within 48 to 72 hours. But unfortunately, often the case is that that encampment is noticed, it moves, but they move to somewhere else and they just set up, you know, an encampment in another location. So unfortunately, the Grants Pass opinion by the Supreme Court, it's not going to have a dramatic impact in the, you know, coming weeks and months because we're already enforcing the laws on the books for individuals who are not following our ordinances. In addition to public camping, there are other arrestable offenses that are vagrancy or quality of life issues. If someone breaks a window, if someone vandalizes property, if someone, you know, forgive me for the graphic, but if someone is, you know, defecating in public or, you know, sleeping in a business's door, those are already things that are not allowed and we do take action on all of those topics. And so there's a small percentage of individuals that may be not breaking any law or breaking any ordinance but are, you know, publicly camping, that that very small percentage, this, this new ruling does give us the ability to communicate to them, you can't camp, you know, in those ways. But for, you know, 95% of instances, we already have the laws on the books and we're pursuing those laws. The challenge is, as has been stated by Chief, but maybe I'll state it slightly more pointedly, is we do not have an enforcement challenge. We have been enforcing our laws, but we have an accountability challenge where if individuals don't have someplace where they can wait until they receive sentencing or wait until they can be diverted into the treatment that they do need, because we're very interested in helping care for individuals who need care. It's a service-first mentality, but some individuals are not making good decisions on their own behalf. And if we can help them have some consequences that divert them into that treatment, that's an accountability issue. It's not an enforcement issue. And it is, it is a big challenge for our community, we know, because I think many individuals feel like, you know, it's a city issue and so it's a city responsibility. But the city of Bakersfield is not in the business of the accountability side. That's our criminal justice systems, our behavioral health, mental health treatment systems. And so we are enforcing significantly. We've increased the number of, you know, police officers on the streets through Measure N over the last four years. And we've increased our capacity to offer services. We're offering, you know, many shelter beds and affordable housing. We're offering more services. We're offering, and we're able to do more enforcement, but there is a lack of accountability in other systems that really, that's the answer to the Grants Pass, is the accountability portion.
Right. Yes, I know we're hogtied in a lot of, lot of ways, but I just want to close, Chief Terry Vitell and you and your department, that you all are doing a wonderful job for us. I appreciate it. I feel like our, our police department is very solid and on the right track and that we're very fortunate as citizens in Bakersfield. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gray, you asked about others coming to see the work that's being done here. We had visitors from Guatemala. And thank you, Chief, for having your team host that along with the CalVip group. And then City Manager Clegg did an outstanding job in moderating a CalVip panel for our regional Southern San Joaquin Valley League of California Cities meeting that we hosted in Bakersfield. We had mayors, city council members, all the way from Fresno down to here, about 60 people all together learning. And you did an outstanding job, Chief, and along with your team and our community partners. Councilmember Weir?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion, you have a motion? Please cash your votes. Thank you, Chief.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, closed session. Closed session. Motion for closed session. Motion for closed, for closed.
Mayor Goff, I may read the closed session item?
Yes, please.
Closed session, item for a conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation on two matters.
Thank you. And we'll be adjourning to closed session. Paul, look, I, we are going in for at least 30 minutes. So I am going to guess we'll be out here closer to 6 o'clock. So sorry, we have matters that we really have to consider. And so if you would just be patient with us, we will consider those and then we'll be back out. But our attorney said it's going to be at least a half hour. Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There were two items on tonight's closed session agenda, both having to do with initiation of litigation. And by unanimous direction, 6-0, with Vice Mayor Gonzalez absent, the city council authorized the city attorney to initiate litigation in both matters. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:54. And we'll start the next meeting in just a few minutes. Technology services can change out now.